Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. We're going to get started because we have folks who have zoomed in virtually. So I want to get going. If you wanted to come closer, that would be okay. I don't bite. So you could come down. If not, that's fine. You could stay where you are. I'm going to do a brief presentation takes about five, 10 minutes, and then we're going to open it up for discussion and questions and conversation about Center for the Arts for Hoover. I'm really happy that you're here. We did a session at 12 noon as well. Had a good crowd for that. Good conversation. Good questions were asked. Was very helpful for us to hear these town hall meetings are an essential part of our engagement process. We talked to the community, getting a sense of the need and the interest and any challenges that people see in the development of a performing arts center or an art space. And so this is a very important aspect of what we're doing. I'm here with my colleague Theresa Korberstein. She's with us virtually. Are you there Theresa?
Hi Victor, hi everyone. It's great to be here virtually. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thanks. Teresa's in Portland, Oregon, so quite far away, but she's with us virtually. And I think there are other people online as well. Both Theresa and I have a lot of experience with the development of performing arts spaces around the country. We've all also run these facilities from an executive level position. So we understand producing and presenting organizations and the needs, the operational needs of these places, how they're run, how they're governed, the costs involved, all the staffing and all that sort of things. We have a lot of experience with that and we've developed spaces around the country. I'm joined by some colleagues here who were part of a team, a larger team with Live Design, the architects and Theater DNA, the theater designers. And our, our firm Performing Arts Planning really is focused on the management and operations of the Performing Arts Center. Once it's built, we're not involved with the design or the construction. We're really looking at it after it's opened. So we understand based on our work here that this has been a conversation that the community's had for several years now, if not decade. And we understand that there has been interest and a need for performing arts space or arts and cultural space for Hoover for quite a while. And the community engagement process is, our study will explore the vision for a new Center for Hoover and discover the community and cultural sector needs of the center. And we'll take that information and hand it over to Theater DNA and Live Design. They'll develop a space program with I, with the number of spaces, the number of seats, the size, the component parts of these spaces. So these sessions that we're holding are very important. So the town hall meeting is part of this community engagement process. We've also undertaken individual, small group interviews with members of the cultural sector. Town hall meeting today that we're having with you, the one we had at noon. And then we also distributed along with Theater DNA, a survey to the cultural organizations, really digging deeper into the component parts, the size, the various needs, the cultural sector to really understand. So that, that in addition to the town hall meeting and the stakeholder engagement is part of what we're gathering in terms of information. We'll take that information and then develop a report back to the city that talks about the what we heard from all of you. The needs of the community in terms of its programming needs. Learn about the aspirations that the community has. Understand the challenges, if there are any, there are always challenges. And again, understanding of the opportunities and the barriers that might exist. We also want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak up, give us their opinions, share them, whether it's positive or negative. We want to hear that. And we want to answer your questions as well. So I've developed a number of questions. These don't have to be the questions you ask, but these are some questions that I have. They could be the questions that you have as well. We'll entertain other questions also. So without any more presentation for me, I'd like to open it up for discussion, comments, questions, anything you'd like to say. This is the time for you to offer us some feedback. So we have a microphone that's passing around. If you would just state your name and where you live and use the microphone so that the people virtually can hear us as well.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi and hello, everybody. My name is Carlos Iskari and I am the music director of the Alabama Symphony Orchestra. And on behalf of not just as artists, but also many, of many, many of them are your neighbors. I think about half of the orchestra lives in in Hoover. And if you count the spouses, et cetera, it's just very encouraging. It is a, a sign of, of real structural progress to even, to even be having this discussion to get to this level where we're having. So I want to thank anybody who's gotten us to this point. I want to point out that, that the, the vibrancy that, that a major orchestra like, like this one is the only full-time orchestra in the state of Alabama. Full-time, full season, all those things. Funny enough, we've never had a performance home where, where, where all that musical magic can be, be shared in, in, you know, the appropriate kind of, there have been some events here and there, of course, but we're talking about the, the actual opportunity for a facility to resonate in conjunction with the, with, with these wonderful musicians. I just think it's a, it's a great, great opportunity for developing those ties and there's no better way really. And I think everybody would agree that in any endeavor and in ours especially, these are literally neighbors here. These are people who have their children, the schools who walk around and who would, would be just pure, pure joy for them and for us to be able to contribute to, to this. And, and obviously I look forward to that as well. Thank you so much.
Carlos, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
In terms of size, seat count for the orchestra, what would be the optimal seat count?
In terms of the stage?
No, in terms of the audience seat seating. Where, where are you performing now?
So our, 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 our longest series during the, the season is our masterwork series, which happens at the Alice Stevens Center at UAB. That's about a thirteen hundred, between thirteen and fourteen hundred capacity, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah. So we're, we're about there with a sizable stage, you know, that we're, we're, sounds very nice. I would say, but, but obviously the, this particular symphony carries the name of the state, right? It's, and it's very deliberate the way it was named because it's caters. We want to cater to, to the state and to the, into all the different ecosystems, even within our metropolis. And, and we're always looking for opportunities to share our different ideas and stuff. And I think this is a, anyways, back to the same.
Thank you.
And how big is the onstage ensemble?
We have a full core of about fifty-three musicians. Quite often there's a, we, we, we expand it to what we call a triple win orchestra. So it's, it's, well, I mean, if this were to be taken back without the, it's twice the size of this particular, maybe a little more. But as, as, as far as dimensions, obviously we could talk, there are different shapes that work for the, for our ensemble.
Sure. So when you do the triple wind, does that come above the fifty-three is that? I know, pop quiz.
Well, look, we're, okay, so a, a, a classical concert would be something like fifty-three to sixty. A more romantic concert, we will be talking between seventy to eighty some musicians. And if we're talking, all right, we're going for it. Boom. Then we're, then we're getting closer to the hundreds. But those are the, the, the big, big giant symphonies.
And do you ever perform with a chorus?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And I, we have the ASO chorus. Also a, an ensemble that has many, many people here in, in the same community. And talk about passionate ones. These are the most community-driven that you can imagine. But anyways, yes, and we are able to, to do from time to time, depending on scheduling and stuff, at least twice a year. I mean, they're doing Messiah this week. I should, I wasn't planning on, but this, this weekend is when they're playing Messiah. So this, yes, we have a chorus. And if I were to go even deeper myself in my aspirations for the future, it's obviously growth in this direction. And that includes all the, the community coral, all, all the community choruses, et cetera. And that could mean an event, I mean, a, a venue like this could, could be a place where, where all this creativity can be explored.
Absolutely. So just out of curiosity, how big is the Messiah chorus?
It, it, it can range between, let's say fifty people to like seventy, eighty.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's very helpful as we just think about space and sounds and all those things.
I will just add that we also are very, very cool in doing all this special, more modern stuff too. That, that, well, you know, we're in the multimedia world, right? And then all these things are part of the, of the enhancements. And surely if we're, as we're thinking of a venue, I mean, we're, I mean, I'm sure you guys are thinking about, you know, tip-top the latest, of the latest. And that too, it's, it's one of the fascinating parts of live performance with all these elements.
Very much so, very much so. Thank you so much.
I hope that's helpful.
Very helpful. Thank you, Carlos.
Victor, I'm wondering if you might share your screen on the virtual slide with some of the questions. Yeah, that way we can on the virtual side see some of the questions that are coming up.
Repeat the, repeat the questions. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I see them now on the, on the screen. If you share your screen, that way our virtual participants can see some of those questions. Great. Oh yeah, that's the perfect slide. Yes. You know, there was one question in the chat that is wondering what is being planned? And I think actually these guiding questions are really helpful because part of what's being planned is really in response to what the town, the community feels like the need is. And so I think maybe it's really helpful to start off by getting a sense of what do you think is needed in this community? What kind of arts and productivity do you like to, to attend? Do you think that there, that we need some kind of facility?
You're asking the community that question?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you see the slide now virtually?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Hi, I'm Betty Wilson. I'm a music teacher for Hoover City Schools. I teach for Dear Valley Elementary. I also am the Children's Minister of Music for River Chase United Methodist and feature soloist with the Alabama Civic Corral, who just also did Messiah. So I'm a performer as well. So I am super excited to be here tonight, having this conversation with you all about a potential possibility of a performing arts space in Hoover. That people in Hoover are very active in the arts. We have, you know, dance, theater, music. We have one of the best art shows in the country, the Bluff Park Art Show. Our children sing and award-winning school choirs. They play in state championship marching bands. The theater troupe just won a bunch of awards at their competition. And for years, we've just been asking and begging and having these conversations with our school system as well about having a performing arts space for these kids and for the community at large. So I'm excited for the possibility of the space. You were asking about size. You know, the gouge that was just built in Auburn, I believe seats thirteen hundred indoors and twenty-five hundred in the outdoor space. The Alice Stevens Center is thirteen, around thirteen hundred. I think our space needs to be at least that big in order to be competitive to, to bring in artists who would want to perform in that kind of space. But also to serve the needs of the community, like the Hoover High Marching Band. If you put every band kid on the stage at one time, that's almost four hundred kids. So we have the need and possibly the desire to have a, a nice, big performance venue. As far as different cultural arts that I've attended in the recent past, I've been up to Nashville to see Hamilton. I've been to the Fox in Atlanta to see Phantom and other performances. I've been to Chattanooga, been to Montgomery. So, you know, people are willing to travel to those places to see those kinds of shows on that level. So why not bring them to Hoover?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So of all those spaces that you saw, are there any that stand out as exceptional? Wonderful spaces that you think is something that would work in Hoover? Besides Alice Stevens?
Um, the T-Pak in, up there in Nashville is, is a lovely space. I've only been to the gouge virtually because of course last year because of COVID, we couldn't actually go to performances, but I'm looking forward to going down there to Auburn to see that space in person. But I think either of those spaces would be quite lovely.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I also think there needs to be an arts center space, not just a stage and performance venue. I know the visual arts are very well represented in our Hoover community. This could be a place where Bluff Park Award, Award Show winners could showcase their art. Studios where new artists could create and teach, where kids could exhibit their work. You know, just some sort of art gallery in, in general, you know, a, a nice, lovely space for, for visual artists. My friend, visual artist here. Again, the thinking, just the best for Hoover, because that's what we, that's what we want. People move to Hoover because it's a growing community, which prides itself on the best schools. A great convenient location, thriving business community, excellent community lifestyle. So dreaming big and large with, you know, state-of-the-art sound, lights, everything to draw in the best performers of the highest caliber. And then providing great spaces for our kids and local performers and people at large who want to attend great arts performances. So I think let's continue to move forward. I don't know what all discussion you've had about the size and scope of the venue, but I, I would love, love to see something large and multifaceted.
Appreciate that. You know, part of our work is to determine size. And that, that is determined by a number of different factors, including the programming and what, what happens on the stage and in the building. So we're working on that right now, but we want, we want this to be an appropriate venue for the community, but also in the context of the area, you know, what makes sense. And these factors also depend on the financial implications of any size and component parts. So we're looking at all of that right now. I think at the end of the day, what you're going to get is a wonderful performing arts center that's very appropriate for Hoover and the region. And maybe the state, something that's unique and something that represents the community quite well. So I, I appreciate your comments. I think they're aligned with how we're thinking about this now too. And the visual arts question, I think is something that we have in our mind as well. There's a number of spaces that we can design in this building that could be used for exhibit space. Other questions, comments, please. Otherwise I want to pick on you and you're going to have to ask a question.
I'm just going to kind of echo what Ms. Wilson said. I'm Amanda Knight. I'm an elementary art school teacher.
Your name, please, your name?
Amanda Knight. I have lived in Hoover my whole life, grew up here, went and enjoyed the arts and the schools, even took AP art in the high school. So it's obviously the center of my heart. I'm not very good with words. So I apologize, but I would like to echo what she said with a working space for the people in the community and even our youth during the summer. I would love to see even like theater groups be able to like have a summer program where they can practice and perform and put on different performances. As far as shows, like theater shows and music shows. Yeah.
So you're, you're, you're looking at this space to be sort of diverse in terms of its programming? Pro, programming for students and community members as well as bringing in artists, that sort of thing? You want a programming mix that's all those things?
Definitely, definitely. I want our children to be able to be involved in it as well. Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back there?
Hi, I am Pam Merkel-Sale and I own the Alabama Dance Academy here in Hoover. And we have been in existence for twenty-seven years and, and, and able to perform in Hoover. So we serve several hundred students. And we have to go outside to Shelby County or to Birmingham City or to other places to hold every performance we do. We're also home to a youth pre-professional ballet company that produces Nutcracker. In fact, I'm running back to the theater right now in Shelby County because we opened this weekend. And it would be wonderful for our students who go to school here and live here to be able to perform in their own community. So I think it's, you know, vitally important for our own community, as many people have, you know, echoed. I also think it's important as a resident of Hoover that we have access to things and we don't have to drive outside of our community. And that is a wonderful place to live, but we also want to show what we have to other people. And if we can bring people into our community with the arts, it's definitely something that's needed. And I cannot echo enough the importance that we need to support our visual artists as well.
Can I just ask? You're needing to go outside of the community. Is it because of stage dimension or seating capacity?
Both. There's nothing.
There's nothing.
Yeah. I mean, like art, we're in a theater that holds eleven hundred right now for Nutcracker and our theater, the theater is big enough, but that there's nothing in Hoover that, and not even in our schools.
You know, the stage, stage dimensions are that.
Sixty by, sixty by eighty?
Big.
Yeah.
How many, how many in Nutcracker?
About a hundred students per performance.
Do they have the backstage accommodations?
They do. Well, it's not great, but it's because it's a school. But it's the best that we can, that we can find that's close enough to us without going all the way to Birmingham.
So is Nutcracker the largest production that you do?
It's on par with some other performances that we do, our end of year school show that like every dance studio does, has way more than that. But our performance companies, yeah, it's, it's, our spring show is the same. We do some smaller ones that we use black box theaters for. Again, not ideal, but it's for cost, that's better than renting out the eleven hundred seat theater.
Thank you. There's one here.
My name is Billy Pennington. I've been in a resident of Hoover for forty years from now. In the forty years that I've been here, people have talked constantly about the need for a visual arts center. We need galleries. There are none. The Hoover Library puts on a small show regularly. Aldridge Gardens puts on a small show. Neither is in a really suitable space. We've been talking about this center actively for the last four or five years. And initially visual arts were in there. And it seems to me more and more I'm hearing performing arts center. And it sounds like the visual arts are getting squeezed out of the thinking, if not the consideration. And I think, I'm not going to speak against performing arts. I'm all for them. But we need galleries, we need studios, we need classrooms where art classes can be taught for adults and children. We need space for lectures. We need space for permanent art collection as well as circulating art collection. And I would hope that that can stay in this mega facility somehow.
Well, I appreciate that. I, you know, we haven't made it, well, you're not done yet.
Well, I was going to say, if you want, you asked several of the other people if, for spaces that they had in mind. If you simply look at the Columbia, the Shelby County Facility in Columbia, it's a smaller community, but what they have done, and I think we want more than that. Their performance facilities are somewhat limited. And I think we would want at least as much as they have for the, in the visual arts. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I think part of the reason we're doing these sessions is to hear from the community and what the needs are. And nothing is, nothing is predetermined. You know, we're taking all of this information into, under consideration. I think at the end of the day, it becomes an issue of cost and, you know, what's the best use of the funds. But certainly we've heard a lot about the visual arts needs of the community and that we won't ignore that. Yes, sir.
Let me just do a little follow-up. Just because I, a, a part of one, what one does often is to resonate from, from great ideas that just, I, I think it makes it even clearer how passionate everybody is here for, for, for a strong cultural expression from within. I, I would just, just a little note there that imagine, can you imagine? A series of nutcrackers going week after week after week with all the families just interacting with a state-of-the-art facility where all the apps and things are in sync, where you don't have to drive too much with the Uber or whatever you get there. And then you're listening and the, the pit, the pit is, 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 it's a real professional pit where you can actually fit the great symphony that we already have, that lives here, by the way. Great asset to have i- in the soil. And it's, it's really, it's, it's, I mean, that, I couldn't imagine a, a more true nutcracker than that, than the real deal. Also, just because, and I also noticed that you have some affiliation with LA. I'm, I'm the music director of the American Youth Symphony.
I'm aware of that, Carlos. We have, we have met.
Okay, there. Well, but they don't know that. So one of the beauties of this is that one, one thing to explore with these facilities and the other ones that one has visited all across the continents is, it's the multi-purpose spaces. Because ultimately it's, I mean, I want to go and see great, a, a great gallery experience as I'm getting up to the theater where there's going to be a great performance. There could be something visual happening there. Even high-tech, you know, interactive with the, with light design. And these are the kinds of things. Who knows where Hoover will take this? It's the creativity that will spark once a facility like this is, becomes a reality. So I see it as a, a real balanced ecosystem between performing, visual and all the other types of expression.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My follow-up is how many people do you like to put in the pit for a nutcracker? A big one? So sixty? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Bordage. I'm the Executive Director of the Birmingham Music Club. And usually when I stand in front of people with a microphone in my hand, I start singing. However, today I will try and just talk. The music club is a hundred and sixteen years old. And Carlos may not even know this, but actually started the Alabama Symphony in the nineteen thirties. We present a season every year with multiple type presentations in a variety of venues. In fact, we've had presentations here in this very theater. During a normal course of our season, we do a concert at the Lyric Theater downtown. We do one very large concert for schoolchildren at the Alabama Theater. And we usually, we do a couple of shows there. We usually get about fifteen hundred children per show. So we'd love to have something that we could do that for Shelby County as well.
Then we do. How many performances a year do you do?
Well, typically four or five presentations. And then we also do a small concert in one of the old mansions down on Highland Avenue. That's limited to eighty-eight seats. And then we do an operetta that we're typically at the Alice Stevens Center for that. So you can see we have different sizes, different sized crowds. And so as soon as we heard about the possibility of, of a, another venue here and in Hoover, we were definitely interested because we're always looking for new places. Something about five hundred seats would be really, really good for us. Would be good for our operettas and, and things of that sort. And I want to reemphasize whoever mentioned this, you know, state-of-the-art really helps these days. And so that's really good. We appreciate that. Also backstage makes a big difference to us, especially when we're doing big productions like the operettas. And you've got thirty-five people in the cast. And you've got thirty five people in the cast and they, some are boys and some are girls and they have to change in different places. So you have to have enough room for everybody. So that's an important thing. And then, of course, we're a small nonprofit organization, so we have to look at every dollar we spend. So it's got to be affordable as well. So and anything we can do to help you out and give you any kind of input, we'll be glad to do that.
You have a venue that you call home or are you, are you just nomadic?
My car is usually referred to as home, but we do have an office.
But you don't have a venue that you call this?
And our office is in Hoover, as a matter of fact. Yeah, no, we don't have a theater.
You're not a resident organization.
No, we're not a resident of any particular theater. So we're available for that.
Well, that's good to know.
Just as a follow up, is, is part of your culture or your organization to go to different places to perform specifically in different places? Or would all of those programs come under one roof if you were to have a theater, were to be a resident organization?
So thought we could entertain. We go to the different venues because they fit for what we have in mind to produce. But, you know, we're, we're open there to something like that.
Thank you.
And when you do the operetta, do you have an orchestra in the pit?
I, I refuse to answer that on the grounds that I may self-incriminate. We, we do have an orchestra and it's a little bit different from the Alabama Symphony.
Understood. But an orchestra pit is important to you?
Orchestra pit's very important.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm Randy Bordage. I also work for the Birmingham Music Club. My question is, are you thinking of having multiple stages like they do at the Alice Stevens Center? Or are you thinking of just, you know, one big, one big stage facility?
Well, it's still in the development process. We haven't really determined that. We know there's going to be one room that's a major, the major theater of X number of seats. We're toying with a thousand twelve hundred seats right now. That can be pared down to another size. And then maybe a second black box type of space. But beyond that, we haven't considered anything additional. Alice Stevens, I think, has three spaces.
Four.
Four spaces. So we're still playing with that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Michael.
Yeah, no. So, so as Victor said, right now we have one large performing space and then one, I would call it like a multi-use or multi-form. So it can swing and do lots of different things. I think the difference between this and Alice Stevens is maybe the pedagogy part, the teaching part where they're doing different things and different uses. One of the things we know for sure is that it's absolutely imperative that whatever spaces we provide, we try to figure out how they can be used two or three different ways. So the goal of every space, whether it's a front of house space in the lobby or this kind of multi-use, multi-swing space, would be to have it function well. So sometimes that means it might be a beautiful conference room that has a pipe grid in it, which makes no sense as a conference room, but when it's not a conference room, it then becomes a small recital space for music. Or perhaps it's a small amplified thing for a, you know, singer songwriter vibe on one night. So I think all of those things are things that we take into consideration. Right now, we're really just thinking of it as space. So we, the reason we're so excited to speak with everyone is all of this is great input that we'll just keep sifting in and turn into a space list, which is very unromantic and very much doesn't reflect all of this wonderful creativity. But that's the language we need to turn it into so that we can start to work with the architect to figure out how big it might be and how tall it might be. And then frankly, figure out how much it's going to cost. And all of that information is what we pass on to city leadership for those next steps. And then considering how that might go forward from there.
Thank you.
Behind you.
This was just a thought. I'm Amanda Knight again. So working spaces for visual artists. You know, I think in a lot of universities, they have a really small space. A lot of times visual artists don't need a huge space. So maybe those could also be maybe a makeup room for theater if we're trying to use them as multipurpose. But we definitely also would want a large space for a gallery space, something really nice for visual artists to come and display their artwork. That would be great, but I also would like to see something for the youth to display their artwork as well. If you go upstairs, you can see in the children's department apartment that the youth have here. It's not a lot of space. It's a little hallway. And then they have the main hall in the library as well. And schools will have their artwork displayed for a month and then it's another school's turn. So there may only be twelve kids out of the school who get to display their artwork. But community members, we used to have a space called Artists on the Bluff where resident artists could have a space to work. A lot, I feel like a lot of those artists would love to have a little studio space in this facility as well.
When you talk about gallery space, you're talking about lockable space or you're talking about more public space that can be left open?
Yeah, I would like studio space, working studio space where artists could work. And then gallery space where they could display their artwork.
But does the gallery space need to be enclosed or locked?
Oh, I would assume both, like the lobby into maybe the theater would be a great space. And then maybe a space, I don't, I don't know.
I was going to share what we shared at the earlier meeting. So one of the things that we know about these, these grand spaces is that you have to adorn them with beautiful things. And so we find great synergy between and these lobby spaces. So where you might have, I'm making up a number, three or four thousand square feet of lobby space. Because we have to hold a thousand people, twelve hundred people, fourteen hundred people, whatever our number is. We have to hold them for a fifteen minute intermission. So that space has to be big enough for people to come out, use a restroom, go to the concession stand, have a cocktail, go back inside. That space is a beautiful, usually tall height, usually beautiful light. So that it's suited, it's suited very well for displaying art. Sometimes we have projects where they can't afford the art in the lobby day one. And we know that you guys have an embarrassment of riches and that you have this legacy of art that is in a permanent collection that could come into something and do that. So we have no idea if that's a good fit now, but we just know that those kinds of spaces are good for that. The other thing I'll say is we have, the, the tough part about theaters is we have lots of weird interstitial spaces that are created by the creation of a performing arts center. So I have a job right now where the space that's underneath the seating, which can't be used for anything else, was actually big enough to do a beautiful little fifteen foot deep gallery that actually allowed us to put a lockable, you know, condition controlled space that actually felt like its own thing. And it sounds very bad that I described it under the seats like it's a troll gallery or something. But it's, you know, we, architecturally, it happened to work out with the planning. There was library, you know, elevator space there, all the good stuff you have to have since it's a public building. So I think there's, there's certainly wonderful opportunities in the future to discuss how we can incorporate visual art into this and have it be celebrated as part of the.
Yes, definitely. And another thought I had is we need to have space for like three dimensional artwork classes. The Shelby County Art Center is a new facility in Columbia, which is about probably fifty seven minutes from my house. So obviously I wouldn't go there during the week and take a class. But if we had a space here, I would love to do that. Just take a clay class, you know, make some pottery on a weeknight. So studio classes or class size would be great as well. I, one of my high school art teachers would stay after school and we would make some extra pottery every now and then. And after class, there was no other space for him to work. Now he teaches casting over at Shelby County Art Center, which is too far away.
Right, right. Thank you very much.
Victor, may I jump in with a question? Or is there someone in the audience waiting?
On, you can, if there's a chat question, go ahead and then we'll take the question in the house.
Great, thank you.
One second. Go ahead, Teresa.
Is there, so one of the questions is, is there a plan to have a paid city employees work at the center? Or would it be all volunteers? And I'll just quickly answer and then I'll turn it over to you, Victor. But part of our task is to put together an operational plan and that would include staffing. And absolutely there would be a need for a great staff that would run a facility with expertise in facility management. And clearly you're, you already have some folks in this town with that expertise, given the library theater and other facilities around the area. But yeah, I, we imagine that there would be great opportunities to have job development in this new space. Victor, is there anything else that you want to add?
No, I would agree with you, Teresa. I think that the idea is to have a professional staff with expertise in the area of operating a performing arts center or center for the arts with that expertise. But there would certainly be opportunities for volunteering in various areas within a center for the arts. So I think both are true, professional staff and volunteers, but it wouldn't be exclusively volunteers.
I would like to speak to that. Oh, I'm Sandra Fuller. I live here in Hoover. I'm an artist, visual artist. But to speak to what Teresa just said, there is a new degree program at Auburn University for hospitality. They have a large building specifically designed for this new degree that they're offering. So it might be something that, that we could keep in mind as you move forward in doing this. This, I'm sure it's something you can find out just by calling the university. The other thing that I would like to say in terms and to echo what was just said about the arts as they existed before, we were not able to be in the Artist on the Bluff facility. I was one of the artists who was there. There were fourteen of us with large rooms that had been classrooms. And every one of those fourteen artists were teaching classes, producing things, working within the community as well as using the spaces for our own individual needs. The gallery space that was there, there were two large rooms and hallways that were used for gallery space. The space would be probably double what the stage is here with walls and being in two separate rooms. And the gallery space was space that was used for events like a yearly competition for the Alabama Watercolor Society, the Pastel Society of America, the Penn Women's Association. There were several things that we hosted that were Alabama facilities and things that they needed to show and the Alabama Arts. And people came from all over the state to see this there. When that closed, we no longer had, could do that. They took their business basically elsewhere. And I would still love to see those particular competitions go on within our gallery. We also had at that time, an artist who would be a guest artist who would give a four day workshop and that kind of thing in conjunction with the shows that we were, that we were hosting. So I just wanted to let you know a little bit about what we did there in terms of using our gallery space.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I mean, I think the message from the visual arts community is very strong and we hear it and we understand it. And we'll take that into consideration as we're developing the space program and the program for the performing arts center. It's helpful for us to hear this. Other questions, comments?
My name is Keith Harrelson. For a dozen years or so, operated a very small performing center for acoustic singer songwriters here in Hoover and before that in Vestavia. Presented over a thousand people from all over the country and in different parts of the world. It was a one hundred seater, little baby hippodrome. And it was strictly for, I say strictly, we actually exceeded those bounds every once in a while. But we were presenting mostly acoustic acts, non percussion, and it was a very small stage. And people seemed to react to that and show up. We had a really tight group of supporters and I had a wonderful time with it. I retired five years ago because it's financial suicide to try and run a place like that out of your own back pocket. The idea of a performing arts center here in Hoover is something I've been very excited about for quite a while. I've appeared in front of the Arts Council to try and talk about that. The performance aspect of it, of course, is of great interest to me. I also see that the expansion of that to include visual arts is right at the core of it. That needs to happen in order to include the community as a whole. And the thought that's occurred to me, and this is outside your bailiwick here, because you guys are wanting to bring us a consummation devoutly to be wished, a wonderful center that is sometime in the future and involves development and time and millions of dollars. I hope that happens. I'll put all the effort that I possibly can into making that happen. In the meantime, I think it would be a good idea for the city of Hoover to make use of existing structures. There is a lot of empty retail in this area, which I think the city is in a good position to do some negotiating and get some of these programs underway right now. So that we, by the time we get to a point where we have a great, beautiful performing arts center, that there is a need for it and people will be anticipating it and looking forward to it a great deal. So that's really my point is if we just sit and wait for it to happen, it's going to be sometime in the future. I think now is the time to get started on developing an arts curriculum for the public here and teaching spaces for visual arts, presentation arts, music lessons, things like that. So that our local community can participate in that sort of thing. So, well, I think people have had that idea, but we've just haven't been able to get off of first base on that. So I'd like to see that start happening so we can work towards what we're discussing right now.
Some of that is happening in this space, right?
It is. We have, Matina's done a world-class job here. This is wonderful. I think there's just a broader aspect to community arts that needs to be served here in Hoover. You've heard that lots of people want to come and participate in the arts outside of performance and include that. And there's just hardly any place to do it at all. I had my experience with it and it was a wonderful thing for me and people that reacted to the presentations that I gave everybody. And I'd just like to see that enthusiasm take root and continue.
When you think about a new space, say it's down the road, you have a size in mind, you had a hundred seat venue that you used. Clearly it's going to be bigger than that. You have a other size in mind?
Well, there's several that we could model it after. Of course, the Shelby County Center is one that's brand new and could be used as a comparison. There is an outdoor space, I think, being developed down at Trace Crossings. And I've spoken to the people who are involved in that. I'm not sure what form that's taken right now. But that is going to be an outdoor stage and there's supposed to be some associated space with that to accommodate gallery use and some other arts classes, I think. It's just surprising to me that there is enough unused space right now. There are enclosures with roofs and four walls and HVA systems that haven't had anything going in them for quite some time. They are owned by developers from outside the community. And I think it's just a, an opportunity for us to get these programs going, get some groundwork and some traction and have people really excited about the development of a larger facility for, for all that to take place.
Great. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you very much. Other questions?
We have another from the chat.
Okay, go ahead, Theresa.
Great. Okay, so a couple of questions that I'll go through, so I don't interrupt again. The first question is. Well, Matina, you'll be glad to hear that folks are singing your praises here in the chat. So just wanted to pass that along again. Indeed, you're quite pivotal in your programming for this community and I want to assure everyone that we are thrilled to be collaborating with Matina. There is a concern, you know, making sure that a new facility wouldn't sort of impact negatively the facilities that you already have. So just the library theater there. And I think that's a really great question. Thankfully, we have all kinds of ideas on how to make sure the library theater stays really active. Actually, Matina has all kinds of ideas, I should say. We've been collaborating about that. There's a lot of room and there's a lot of really great programming that can be done. Such that a new space would just be another addition to the programming that's already happening. And then, so that's, I have a couple of other questions, but Victor, do you have anything to add to that before I move on to the other two questions?
No, I think I just would just like to add that when we think about Hoover and a new performing arts center or Center for the Performing Arts. We take into consideration the library theaters as, as an active venue, a programming operation that exists. We don't want to in any way negatively impact that. I think it should be. An addition to the library theater, a positive addition to the library theater. Programming could happen here at its level. And new performing arts center could have programming that would be appropriate for a larger venue. So I think there's a good programmer would take these venues and use them as tools. And program specifically for a two hundred and fifty seat theater and programming for a thousand seat plus theater in a different way. But it'd be a great sort of assortment of spend of space in Hoover and it would certainly complement each other. That's all I wanted to add. So go ahead with your other questions in the chat.
Great, great. Thank you. Another question has to do with funding. Wondering how that's going to get addressed. Is there going to be a vote that the residents need to take up? That is another question and. I will just say that this is something that the city council is working on. They're very excited to be figuring this out. There isn't a real answer that I know of just yet, but Victor, is there more you want to say to that, to that end?
Well, we, we don't, we're not working on the funding aspect of this. We don't know how much it's going to cost yet. Ultimately, it is the city's decision to move forward on a funding model. We have to do our work so that we know the size of the space. The size of the space will determine the cost per square foot. The cost of square foot then goes to the city. And then they make a determination about how that's going to be funded. Our work, Theresa, my work, has to do with the operational costs. Once the building is open, how much is it going to cost to program, produce events, hire the staff? Is there revenue sources? Are there revenue sources that can be covered by some of these? Endowment monies or fundraising efforts. So our work is operational, the capital campaign, the design work and the construction is something separate. Than that, than that, but we don't know what that is yet until we do our work. That goes to theater DNA and live design and they'll come up with a space program and a cost per square foot.
Yes, agreed. Well, absolutely. I am sure that the residents will be informed once we get down that road. Or once the community is ready to take on that issue. And one last question is, are there a timeline for additional meetings, location info, plans? Are we talking five years, et cetera? And so our work here as consultants is to really get into the planning and gathering phase. And execute that actually within the next two months. Is there more that you want to talk about in terms of next steps, Victor?
No, you're right. Our work will be done in January and then that goes to the design team to do the space program. That'll be another couple of months beyond that. And then we've heard, you know, projections that. A building could be open in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. It really depends on so many different factors. It's hard to put a timeline on it. What our work should be done in early twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Carlos, did you have another question, comment?
It was just a comment, really. Kind of, it's, it's not to sound like a broken record, but it's when we have a robust. Performing arts space. And I'm not necessarily focusing on the peripheral stuff or anything that can fit something like an orchestra. You already have met. Sort of the, the high bar. So I can imagine a multipurpose place like this can have a number of. Types of events, everything we've described, everything you can imagine, operas, ballet, you know, rock bands, whatever. But one great use for, for, for a venue such as this. And I'm thinking what they do at the Levis from, in, in Orange County, what they do in Porto, Portugal, Portugal. In Colombia and Bogota with Santo Domingo Center, which is very much kind of like in a residential family center area. The off, the off, quote unquote, off days, the days that are not the Friday, Saturday where people tend to go for entertainment. Those same days, you're setting yourself up as a community to have after school programs, arts programs. Youth orchestra programs that are not just the Saturday. We have the Alabama Symphony Youth Orchestra, for example. They rehearse on Saturdays. It's, 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 it's a logistical challenge because kids come from all over the place. But this is something that would not compete with, with other things that are happening elsewhere, as was mentioned here. Because, well, we still haven't cracked the code, let's call it, with regards to the balance between the community and kids performing in ensembles like orchestras. Like jazz bands, like bands and other kinds of musical activity and performing, other kinds of performances. I'm focusing here on the music part. Because that's another thing worth considering as you envision a performing arts place. It's our kids playing our own on a regular basis and, and, and developing all those skills. That immediately translate, all the studies are out there into better scientists, better at math, the stand, the steam part of STEM, right? And I think that does not have to be seen as something separate from, for example, after school activities like sports, football and all that. It's actually complimentary, it's welcoming to some of the other kids that need these kinds of things. I mean, I want to see more, less kids in doing this, right? I mean, now it's even when they're doing homework, it's kind of like this. So I need physical activity. I need to see physical activity in a beautiful space that resonates. And I'm telling you, I, I went to the Interlog in Arts Academy up in Michigan. This, the infrastructure, and that's basically gave me my life. That's why I'm here. And it's to have something like that in many of these communities. Especially it's your own kids, right? And, and, and them playing the, oh, I can guarantee they'll be coached by the very best. And it's just, it's just something I, I, I just add to this potential vision for a performing arts place. It's the entertainment part. But at the same place, is it the place where you're actually cultivating your own very best, your kids? And they'll be playing in a magnificent place. They'll always be proud to call this place home.
Yeah. No, I'm a firm believer in performing arts being also educational in, in any, in a lot of different ways. And even if there's a. Presented program or a curated program, those, those artists are coming in can share their expertise with young people. Through masterclasses and workshops and that sort of thing. So I think there's an opportunity there, a programming opportunity, not only to present performances, but also to educate. Young people in the community.
Hey, I'm Gene Fuller. I live here in Hoover. I'm an engineering minded person and have not heard any conversations and I'm not familiar with. The technology that might go into a facility like this. Could someone talk a little bit about that? And, and in particular, I would hope that whatever we put in. Is certainly state of the art, but maybe even looking beyond where the state of the art or maybe, of course. We, we'd never know where technology is going, but anyway, to try to make sure that we're not obsolete in terms of the technology. You know, in a short period of time. So.
You've got one of the best right here. He'll answer that question.
The secret is we have a crystal ball. And we can tell everything about technology with it. So. I am not a billionaire, as it turns out.
He doesn't have that crystal ball.
Yeah, I do not have a crystal ball, to be clear on the record. So what I can tell you is, is that there is almost no way to, to anticipate where technology will tell you. Will take you and where it wants to go. But what we do know is that no matter what technology has brought for the last thousand years in performance technologies. Is you need a way to hang it up. And in the last century or so, you need a place to plug it in. And so those are the kinds of things where, where we would say, no matter what happens with it. So this project, I will make a bold declaration right now. This project will not be overfunded. So because of that, the last and common lens that gets applied to all of the dreams, because right now our job is to put the kite in the air as high as we can take it, right? Just let the flight tie and come up, the kite fly and come up with all these amazing ideas. But at some point, somebody's going to start pulling on that string. And they're going to pull that kite back into where it needs to be, where the right place is, where it's a balance of what we're providing for the community, how much it costs. Not just on initial capital cost, but how much it costs to operate. Because we're not, you know, the, the responsibility here is to provide something that's an asset to the community, but not a burden. So what we can tell you is no matter what ends up in the building. It will have one hundred percent of the infrastructure. So that infrastructure means there will always be a way to hang something up. There will always be a way to plug it in. And the plug it in part is not just power now, it's about data. So that means you're putting in fiber into buildings that you never used to put in before. Just to connect point A to point B, because we don't know what is going to need to go between A and B. But we know that the bandwidth of a piece of fiber exceeds by a factor of a thousand, anything that we're currently doing today. So the other thing, which I'll tell you, which is just as an anecdote. One of the most valuable things you can put in a theater, day one, is holes in the walls. Because if you go into a well-used theater down the road, you'll find that they've left doors open or poked holes through walls, because guys like me. And guys like him know that if you need to get a cable from point A to point B, you're going to get the cable there. So that either means it's running up the outside of the room and through the front window, or it's poking through a wall and the thing. So what we do from day one is we try to put little mouse holes and little cable passes through walls in critical areas, knowing that that'll mean. I could get a cable from inside this room to that lobby, no matter what. And I might put one on this side and put one on that side. So I don't know if that's going to work for the next hundred years. But I know that that's going to give them a really good shot at not ever having to leave that door propped open, right? Yeah, thank you from the booth. Checks in the mail. So, so that's one of those things that's critical. And then as far as the state of the art goes, it, you know. Sound systems these days have a lifespan of three to five years. So I could tell you what a sound system state of the art is today and we would be wrong by the time the building opens. So because of that, we have a lot of strategies in place where we will price things, but we won't buy it until six months before the building opens. So we make sure that we're always trying to get the latest. The other good news is that almost, at this point, all stage lighting. Where it used to be incandescent, which is a bunch of what we're looking at there and there's some LEDs up there. Now there's nothing but really LEDs and won't be that going forward. So when we make those kinds of changes, you know, if you looked at the history of lighting and it started off with probably a fire and then there was, you know, several thousand years and then a light bulb for medicine. And then almost no advancement till the LED, right? And so, so stuff doesn't change very quickly, but LEDs are now at the point where they're actually viable. Because they're not quite bright enough in power and cost and all that stuff. So. Shorter answer, we always aim for that state of the art, meaning the right answer, not maybe just the whiz bang. Straight out of the magazine latest thing, but the thing that's the right answer for the shows that you're doing, the amount of time that we need it to last. One of the things we know, this is not a professional, this is a city-owned facility, which means the accountability is to you, is the citizens of Hoover. You're paying, you know, for this thing if it's a city facility. So that means sometimes the right answer is to find something that works really, really good. And will last for nine years as opposed to work freaking amazingly and last for two years. Because that really probably wouldn't be the right answer. It might be the right answer for that one microphone or that one thing, but maybe not the whole thing. So that balance is part of what we work very hard to achieve when we're designing.
How good is sound technology currently?
In what way?
Well, in, in terms of just, I know going back years ago, you would design a stage system and. How everybody sat in it and curtains and all of that because of sounds bouncing around the room and all that kind of stuff. Is, is all of that still pretty much followed or can you now put sound systems in where. Sitting anywhere, you've got a good seat. Let me put it that way.
So the one, one version of the answer is, is that the discipline of acoustics and acousticians has become much more prevalent in the last two to three decades. So we won't do a job like any theater, especially if it's got an orchestra and it's got live acoustic music. That job won't happen without an acoustician. So they're kind of the third wheel, if you will. There's an architect, the theater consultant and an acoustician. So because of that. Now that means you've got somebody looking out for where the walls are, what they're shaped as, what the density of it is, where there are curtains, where there are not curtains. So because of that, we're able to finely tune that a little more. And then with audio systems, they're, they're able to be more focused and more directed than they used to be in the past. Which, so just as the technology advances, you're able to be a little more laser focused.
And the LED lights, you can do a lot more, I'm gonna say flickering on and off.
Well, everything can flicker, but the difference would be a light like that probably has a twenty dollar lamp that lasts three or four hundred hours. An LED is supposed to last twenty thousand hours and it costs ten times as much, but it will last twenty times as long.
Uses less power.
It uses less power, which means we don't put as much power into the building. It makes less heat, so we don't have to use as much air conditioning. And then artistically, which is the part we're always, ultimately, we're logistical, but at the end of the day, we're worried about the art and the artist. So at the end of the day, instead of having to go up and cut out a little piece of plastic and put it in the light to make it that blue color or that pink color. You now could just change something on the console upstairs and have control over, quite literally, unlimited. So we've just proven that those are LEDs. The side guys are incandescent, right?
Yeah, at the end of the day, though, it would be nice if our facility, who facility. Had something unique from a technology standpoint. I don't know what that is or.
So I said early in the early meeting, these projects end up being very unique and that it'll be the right answer for Hoover. The technology part to be unique is always the desire. It usually has dollar signs. So we are taking donations. We do know where we can direct that funding. But yeah, but the idea is that it probably won't be that one piece of technology that's unique, because if it was unique, then it wouldn't actually exist. Because the only reason people create anything is because they can sell five thousand of them. So what'll be unique, though, is how we assemble them. What'll be unique is with the choices we make to put together.
And I might also throw in a plug for my wife, who's a visual artist. Visual art is also produced electronically.
Absolutely.
As we all know, and that's probably still, you know, being developed as we speak.
And hopefully always will be.
Yes.
One of the things about technology that isn't really on stage, but in the front of houses. The selling of ticket function is totally different now than it was even two years ago, before the pandemic. Most people are printing at home or putting it on their phone. So it's, that's very different. And that's a technology that's being developed now too. So your need for a box office changes, right? It's a different kind of, it's more of an information center. Any more comments? Yes, sir.
Just, just quickly, I didn't mean to sound like Debbie Downer a while ago. And, and I want to say, I'm saying this with a positive intent. You have continued to use the term performing arts center. You're going to sell this to the citizens of Hoover a lot better if you say Fine Arts Center or Performing and Visual Arts Center. Something that makes it obvious that you're including the visual arts. They may eventually going into, go into two separate. Programs and two separate facilities. programs and two separate facilities. But for now, I think that's what we're talking about, visual and performing arts.
I understand. So when I think about, when I think about 1,000 seats in a stage, that's a performing arts center.
Right.
And, and it has visual arts components within it. It's not a visual arts space with a stage. It's a performing arts center with visual arts components. And I, I'll take your note about selling it to the community. I appreciate that. Theresa, anything on the chat?
I'm getting notes of appreciation for the, for the thoughts from Michael regarding the space and the technology. Thank you for that. That's been really helpful.
Anything else?
Nothing else in the chat.
Okay. Well, I think we can wrap this up. Unless there are any more comments, I want to take a minute to just thank the library theater staff for their extraordinary logistical help and help with the technology and the virtual hook up and all of this.
And lighting cues. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. And thank Matina and her staff for everything that you've done and wish you all a happy holiday and thank you for participating today. It's very helpful for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.